Evening, it's now 6:00 PM and the regular session of the Planning Commission of the City of Lancaster will please come to order. Tonight, our invocation is offered by Pastor Robert Enos of the Great Works Christian Center. And the pledge, if you'd all stand, and then the pledge will be led by Commissioner Harvey.
Father, we thank you so much for everything that you're doing in this fantastic city. I thank you for what you're accomplishing right here in this room through this commission and through the people here in Lancaster. "In God We Trust," posted right up there on the wall. I pray, Father, that that wouldn't only be words on the wall, but something we live by here daily, and a motto, so to speak, something that drives us to create a better city that honors you. Bless this city, bless this commission, bless, Lord, this local government. We bless you, and I thank you again for everything that you're doing in this city. In Jesus' name, amen.
Please remain standing as we honor our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have the roll call, please.
Commissioners Diana Cook, Ryan Christ, Cassandra Harvey, Raj Molly, Fabian Tarasiano, Vice Chair Hall, Chairman James Wose, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Public business from the floor. If an individual is unable to stay through the entire meeting, a total of 10 minutes is provided at this time during which input may be given regarding agenda items. Individual speakers would be, early speakers, would be limited to two minutes each. Do we have any early speakers, Mr. Ludiki?
None that have indicated, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Then any person who would like to address the commission on any agendized item is requested to complete a speaker's card for the recording secretary identifying the agenda item you would like to discuss. Each person will then be given an opportunity to address the commission at the time the commission discusses the item. Speaker cards are available at the rear of the chamber. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. Other than the applicant, or the representative, who can address us at whatever reasonable length we're willing to listen. First item is our consent calendar, which is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 21, 2014. Have a motion, please.
I make a motion that we approve minutes from the regular meeting of April 21, 2014.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Motion passes 6-0 with one abstention.
We have new public hearings tonight. The first is Conditional Use Permit Number 14-02. So without objection, a public hearing is open on this matter. It's a request of the addition of a Type 20 off-sale beer and wine alcoholic beverages beverage control ABC license for incidental off-sale of alcoholic beverages at a convenience market in a commercial or C-zone, location 767 West Avenue I. And for the record, we've received from the applicant an uncontested letter indicating they agree with all the conditions of approval. We've also received tonight revisions to the floor plan and site plan, which we just received, so there may be some questions from the members. At any rate, the public hearing is open. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Chair of the Commissions, I have before you tonight Conditional Use Permit 14-02. This is a request to allow for an alcoholic beverage control license Type 20 for beer and wine at the proposed convenience market. The building is 5,700 square feet and houses the former Goodwill store. Proposed alcohol sales would be daily between the hours of 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM. The floor plan indicates the location of the required minimum square footage of 10% or 500 square feet of floor area for the display of fresh produce, meat and fresh produce, and also shows the location of the maximum square footage of 10% for alcoholic display. This is a requirement for the use to be considered an incidental alcohol use. Since the use is incidental off-sale, it is exempt from the distance requirements. The applicant is in the process of obtaining approval for a director's review to improve circulation, repave, and restripe the parking lot. The improvements include a path of travel from Avenue I, two handicap parking spaces, and a bike rack. In addition, the applicant will be constructing a trash enclosure, installing landscaping to enhance the aesthetics of the site. Approval of the director's review and the city's certificate of occupancy process would ensure that all site and building standards for health and safety are met. The required parking for the convenience market is one space for every 250 square feet of floor area. The market would require 23 spaces, and the parking lot is being reconfigured for 19 spaces. Staff believes that the number of spaces can be reduced due to the store's close proximity to existing residences who could walk to the market. Staff received the investigation form from the Lancaster Sheriff's Station stating that the sheriff's department does not oppose the applicant's request, and the use would not be detrimental to the public safety based on this investigation report criteria. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 1402 approving ABC license Type 20 for the sale of beer and wine at a convenience market located at 767 West Avenue I, subject to the conditions of approval. That concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available for any questions. The applicant's engineers also here this evening for any questions.
All right, thank you. Do the members have any questions before we hear from the applicant? Go ahead.
I think it might be the next slide. Yeah, that one right there, perfect, actually. On the right-hand side, that's Avenue I, correct? Okay, and I think what we added when we got this new one was the, we're looking to make sure where alcohol was being served from, the actual location. I think that is in the shaded area on the top left.
That's correct.
Okay. I'm just looking to see, I just wanted to verify that and that no other places would it be sold.
Yeah, it shows, you know, the top portion there and the new racks towards the south end of that picture there.
Okay, perfect.
Or to the, yeah, to the south end right there.
Okay.
Exactly, the shaded areas.
Okay. I think there's a couple windows out front that I saw, and assuming there's probably none in the back that I saw, but, perfect.
So the sale of alcoholic beverages is not confined to the cold cases. It's on the 18-inch wide, 32-foot-long storage racks, four of them. In a close proximity to the front door, or the main access, I'm assuming. Am I about right?
Right, the new access is from the east side of the building now. I'm sorry, the west side of the building.
However, you can still access off of Avenue I door.
It was, I'll have to check with applicant, but it was my understanding that that was going to be closed, but it looks...
Can't be closed during business hours if it exists, so...
We can double-check with applicant.
All righty. We'll reserve our questions then for the applicant, I guess. Anything else you want to add, or anyone else have any comments or questions for you?
I do.
Go ahead.
Mr. Oni, it says here on the walk-in cooler, it's 320 square feet of alcohol display and storage area, and then down on the lower right of the drawing, it's 192 square feet of alcohol display, and the conditions, it said, 320.
Right, what he is showing now is the maximum that's allowed. I think it actually adds up only to like a 504 square feet, but he is allowed 570, so he just said if he does intend to maximize that square footage, that's the locations that it would be at.
And he's not going to have any single serve in the coolers?
No.
And so...
That is a condition.
He can sell full-size six-pack?
Correct.
And the wine, if it's in smaller, it has to be in packs, too?
Correct, there's a minimum size for that as well.
How does the city enforce that?
We make ABC aware of what the restriction is on the approval of the conditional use permit, and then they will normally condition the license to that effect, and staff also has the ability to investigate if there's some sort of a problem. We haven't had an issue to this point with those restrictions where we've applied them on the newer users.
So what would cause an investigation?
If there were to be some complaint that somebody was able to enter a facility and buy a single can, or if they broke apart a package of some kind, that's obviously a violation of the restriction. So from the city's standpoint, that would be enough. Whether that would be enough, you know, one incident for ABC to investigate, I don't know, but obviously, there's kind of a dual bit of enforcement that goes on when you have state control on the license, as well as the city's control on the CUP and the use and the restrictions applied to the use.
Thank you. More questions?
Thank you. All right then, so we have, is the applicant a speaker on this?
Jose Hernandez.
All right, please come forward, and we'll be happy to hear what you've got to tell us. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, how are you doing? Actually, this is my, the person behind me is the applicant, named Bobby Grahal. He's the owner of the supermarket. And to answer some of your questions as far as the door, well, since we were going to relocate the main entrance to the building, to the west side of the building, we were actually locked that door, so there isn't no access from that, because we're relocating the main entrance to that. Okay?
You may have a challenge with our local fire authority if you have a...
Right.
So...
Okay. Well, I guess we have to reconsider that. If that is the case, we have to reconsider that option, not to enclose it. And as far as the liquor, well, liquor location, I guess that was the area we're going to put more like the non, I didn't need it refrigerant, like wine, and certain things that don't require to be cold. But like, Chris, the planner said, we were, actually, I was maximizing the amount allowed, but just in case the applicant did want to go and store that much alcohol.
So, the product would be stored on the shelf? There wouldn't be any displays on an end cap?
No.
Or anywhere else in the premise?
No, it would be all displayed on the shelves themselves.
Okay. That's usually not the case in retail marketing, particularly with beverages, you probably well know.
Yes.
So, but in this particular case, you're going on record indicating there would not be any product displayed other than on the shelf or in the cold case?
Yes, due to the space limitations that we have on the store itself. I mean, we really can't encroach too much on the ADA path of travels, so that would be limit us to doing that.
Okay, as long as we're clear.
Chairman Wose?
Go ahead.
I don't see how it'd be feasible to close off that west entrance when that seems to be the main entrance off the parking lot.
No, the west entrance is actually a brand-new opening that we're creating.
Right.
Right.
Okay, so you will not be closing...
No, the west, on the west side?
Yes.
No, that's a brand-new entrance that we're creating.
Okay, because I thought I heard you say that you were going to close off the west entrance.
No, Avenue I, we're going to, Avenue I, but...
That'd be the south side.
That'd be the south side, yes.
Thank you.
All right, is that all you have to present to us?
Actually, I'd also like to say that by approving this CUP, it would actually allow a lot of the families around the surrounding neighborhood to actually be, have something convenient within walking distance of their homes, because as it is right now, the nearest supermarket is not as all the way on 20th and I, I believe. So this would actually give them a great location for something more convenient. And that's it.
Some may challenge that description of a supermarket. However, I won't push the point with you.
I'm sorry?
I say I won't push the point with you. The conditions, on the alcohol conditions, a minimum of 10% of display on the sales floor area for fresh meat and produce. That's fresh meat, that's not frozen meat, right?
Right.
So we're clear on that, so the, whatever it is, one, two, three meat cases would all be fresh meat and fully stocked, and the produce and vegetables, the same sort of condition?
Yes.
Okay. That's great, the neighborhood needs it. All right?
Thank you very much.
I don't, on your site plan, that's the floor plan, can we have the site plan up, On the site plan, maybe I missed it, I, you know, my old eyes aren't necessarily as good as someone else's. I don't see, I don't see any lighting or light standards depicted on the site plan or the proposed improvement.
The existing building actually has lighting on itself on the west end. That's all, that's all the existing there is right now. And if we require, or if you require that we install any other additional light poles on the north part of the property, then I guess we shall address that issue with the design.
The proposed hours of operation would be in nighttime hours when it's dark, right?
Right.
So, for safety's sake, wouldn't you think it would be appropriate to have a convenience lighting there?
Yes, yes, we'll have to address that lighting design.
So, Mr. Ludiki, how would we address that?
You could add that condition or emphasize the need for the lighting on the part of the one condition. The plans for the improvements of the parking lot, the landscaping additions and so forth, are also being processed by staff under a director's review, so we could also then require that information to be shown as a part of that, and that would be an appropriate thing to have done as a part of that, that review and approval.
Because the standard condition list, or the additions to the standard condition list exempt 7A, which is a lighting plan.
Yeah, you could remove that exemption.
And a building plan, since it's going to be under director's review. It'd be my opinion at least, and it may be only my opinion, that appropriate lighting that doesn't expose the neighbors to encroachment would be appropriate. How do you plan on handling deliveries? It looks like you have one or two rear doors here, a double door and a single door, that's go in the electrical room, but you have a double door on the north end. However, there doesn't appear to be a loading dock nor sufficient room to maneuver.
On the north side of the building, there is actually a double door that used to be used as, for deliveries for the old Goodwill store, and there is no loading dock, because it's all level floor. So the truck would come in and back up into the, adjacent to the fencing there, that's there, that we're going to install for security purposes as well.
About the trash truck, how's that going to maneuver?
It would have to, it would have to go in and, in all the way to the east and then back up. There is no other way to circulating the trucks around that area.
Trying to make the best of a challenging location?
Yes, we are.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have anything else to...
I have one question, Chairman Wose, and maybe this is to Mr. On. It looks as though, based on the 17 regular stalls, two handicap stalls, it's a total of 19 stalls provided, but based on the square footage or formula, there should be approximately 23 stalls?
That's correct.
So we're short four?
Correct. And the reason why we're allowing that is because we assume that potentially a third of the customers will be walking to their, walking to this establishment.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, the site plan that we're looking at only shows paving improvements to a portion of the parking lot. Doesn't show improvements to the roadway access, or maybe it's just not depicted on this plan, but the road surfaces out there marginal at best on the, on the north-south access off of Avenue I.
Yes, what we're doing there, we're actually improving the existing dirt area with a new pavement being actually designed as we speak. And then we're joining at wherever we have existing pavement, which is all there at this point.
So if the city engineer requires, whatever they might require to...
Yes.
You'll conform to that?
Yes.
All right, great. Okay? Anyone else have any questions or comments for the applicant? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Do you have any other speakers?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. So then, without objection, we'll close the public hearing and consider a motion or discussion if you'd care to have it prior to a motion. No? A motion then.
I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 14-02, approving Conditional Use Permit Number 14-02.
Second that?
Thank you.
Chairman Wose?
Go ahead.
In the motion, I would like to include the 7A and the standard conditions.
I'm not sure that that's the way the director would like us to handle it. Would you prefer to have a direct, direction given to you relative to the appropriate site work, including lighting, for safety purposes, or do you want to, or would it work well for you to add 7A back into the standard condition?
I think adding 7A back in is appropriate, and I think, given the fact that lighting is one of the issues addressed in the city's alcohol ordinance, it would, it would be an appropriate addition.
All right then. So the motion would be to adopt the, adopt Resolution 1402, including Condition 7A, rather than excluding Condition 7A. Would that be correct?
Yes, that was what I was after.
All right?
Yeah, I'll leave it with that.
All right?
No.
Any further questions or comments? Please vote. Thank you. Good luck with your project. Next public hearing is Conditional Use Permit Number 1404. So without objection, the public hearing is open on this matter. This is a application to allow a cocktail lounge with live entertainment with on-sale beer and wine, beer, wine, and distilled spirits, an ABC license Type 48, in a commercial planned development CPD zone. In effect, it's a nightclub. So, the hearing is open on this matter. May we have a staff report, please?
Sure. Chair of the Commissions, I have before you tonight Conditional Use Permit Number 14-04, which is a co-request to allow for a cocktail lounge with live entertainment with an ABC license Type 48 for beer, wine, and distilled spirits, and an outdoor hookah patio. On September 15, 2008, the Planning Commission approved CUP 08-13 to allow for an ABC license type for beer and wine at Giovanni's Restaurant. The former restaurant was separated into two units, and the applicant is proposing to occupy the southernmost space at 1,843 square feet. The hours of operation would be Tuesdays and Wednesdays from 5:00 PM to 12:00 AM, Thursdays and Fridays, Fridays from 5:00 PM to 2:00 AM, Saturdays from 7:00 PM to 2:00 AM. The floor plan indicates an open floor plan that would accommodate 16 tables with four chairs per table. A bar is located at the western portion of the floor plan, and tobacco sells at the southeast corner. Hookah and tobacco smoking would only be allowed on the patio. Live entertainment would begin after 7:00 PM. Entertainment events could include music such as live bands, DJs, and dancing. There would be a variety of music, including rock, reggae, jazz, country, pop, and dance. Security will be provided by a private company and in-house staff. An ID check would be conducted at the entrance. One uniformed security person will be provided for each 50 patrons. The applicant is conditioned to provide one security guard for each entrance exit, one security guard to patrol the outside area, and one guard for each 50 people inside during the live entertainment hours. The applicant indicated that the parking lot area would be monitored. The applicant is conditioned to prevent guests from going in and out of the venue and loitering in the parking lot and surrounding properties. The applicant is conditioned to prevent guests from going in and out of the venue and loitering in the parking lot and surrounding properties. The proposed use is considered a primary use and therefore must comply with the separation distance requirements. The applicant has indicated, and staff has verified, that there are no sensitive uses within five hundred feet of the proposed project. Staff received an investigation report from the Lancaster Sheriff's Station stating that the Sheriff's Department does not oppose the applicant's request, and the use would not be detrimental to public safety based on the investigation report criteria. Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution fourteen dash zero-three, approving ABC license type forty-eight for the sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits with live entertainment and outdoor hookah. At My Lounge, located at four-two-zero-three-five, Tenth Street West, Suite one oh-five, is subject to conditions of approval. That concludes staff's presentation, staff is available for any questions, and the applicant is also here to answer any questions.
Thank you. There may be some. Before we hear from the applicant? Nope? All right. And the applicant is?
Lamont Carr, My Lounge, Jane Corbett, how you doing?
Actually, you can stand up and speak.
Okay.
It's a little more comfortable and we can hear you fine.
Yeah, I can answer any questions that you guys have. I have absolutely no issues whatsoever with the, uh, conditions. Um, I think, I really wanted to more or less just start off by saying that other people prior to, to me coming into the, the city to actually open a business have kind of, you know, took it for granted, the privilege to actually sell alcohol and have entertainment and so forth. And that is something that I, you know, hold to the highest regard to make sure that that, you know, remains, you know, to the standards of the city, to not violate anything like that. And having these conditions set forth could only, you know, add to making that, you know, be a good hassle for, actually for the city and for the business itself.
All right, thank you. The members may have some questions of you. Anyone? Go ahead.
No, not whatsoever, no. I just did the, um, the, the actual mailers for the actual property owners within five hundred feet. I didn't like, I think the city, the planning staff actually gave actual letters addressing, you know, the actual use prior to me actually doing the, um, actual report for the actual ordinance of the five hundred, uh, feet for the property owners.
So, Mr. Ahn?
Yes, I did go out to the few neighboring, uh, res, uh, businesses and gave them the notice as well.
Any responses from anyone?
Not initially, no comments.
All right. Thank you.
Chairman Bowes?
Go ahead.
You'll be doing all the, uh, promoting yourself?
Yes, sir.
Entertainment?
Yes.
Sure.
Yeah, that was one of the conditions that the city, you know, I guess they've had issues in the past, so I mean, that's something from, within, within anything where other people are coming in, uh, to actually run a night. I think that's the way it was listed in the item, I think, it's the second condition.
Yeah, item two.
Yes.
Thank you.
Go, there are, um, go ahead if you have some question.
I think the language you used to, uh, patrol the parking lot was monitor. What do you mean by that?
Uh, I was gonna hire OPSEC security for actually the actual parking lot itself to, you know, prevent people from loitering and, um, drinking in their car and so forth like that. And then be a, a median between the actual staff inside and outside with the OPSEC to, um, you know, if anyone's in the parking lot not coming in and just more or less to kind of overlook, you know, people that are trying to drink and drive and so forth like that. Ford actually has to get addressed with possibly calling the Sheriff's Department if a person isn't, you know, willing to abide by the rules of the, that we set forth.
And then I know that there's a forty-two-inch-high wall, um, and that's next to the curb. And will that have like an overhand access to the parking lot, or what's the accessibility from?
Is that in the rear?
From the existing patio there at the bottom?
No, no, the, um, the actual, um, the way you would enter would be to the, to the right of the actual existing patio, where the, the archways that are actually inside the, um, the facility, that's the way they would enter. And the way they would actually leave would be through the same exit and the, uh, exit that directly gets you onto the actual patio. Cause there's a, I think, an eight-foot section for the actual, um, gating of the patio. But that, if they're already outside, there's no point to come back in to exit through the same door again. But there would be no access, I mean, somebody could stand next to that wrought iron fence and talk or so forth. But we planned on putting some kind of, um, outside curtains up to drape and, and close that actual area in so that when you walk up, it's not fully exposed. But that wouldn't be like anything, um, other than, you know, some kind of drapery that's, you know, outside use.
So, have you submitted a, uh, quote, outside curtain, uh, to?
No, no, I haven't. It was just something that I kinda, you know, when there's, when it's kind of windy or if it's raining, so that people would still wanna sit out there. Cause it, it does actually have a, you know, like a, a patio roof to the actual part of the, um, existing patio.
Oh, I'm familiar with the site.
Like an awning.
I'm familiar with the site.
Okay, so, and it was just more or less to just add something to dress it up, but nothing, you know, to where it would have to be, you know, mechanically or engineered or anything like that?
No, I'm not concerned about that. My, uh, the question I, uh, or the response to your response is have, have, uh, hazard planning department or city engineer or Sheriff's Department considered that since it would impede visual, uh, security issues?
No, it was just a cosmetic, you know, accent that I was looking to add. But if I, if I would have to get some kind of permission for that, I just thought it might.
I would expect you'd need to have some sort of an approval before you installed that, certainly from, uh, from the landlord, from, from, at the beginning of, of the process, as well as, uh, various folks here at the city. But, um, so the, the sale of alcoholic beverages is, um, restricted to the enclosed space and not in the patio area?
They will be able to consume, if they, they purchase inside the actual establishment, they could consume their alcohol actually on the patio, and that's where they would have to smoke the tobacco and do the hookah. But all that is fully, it would be enclosed, so.
I didn't notice that, uh, in the staff report that that was an allowable condition. Was that a consideration, Mr. Ahn?
Are you speaking in terms of alcohol in the outdoor patio?
Alcohol, yes.
Um, yeah, that is normally allowed for other restaurants when we include it in the, in the floor plan?
This is not a restaurant, however, this, this is a nightclub in effect.
Correct.
And we've had, certainly had some experience with, um, operations of nightclubs that haven't been too successful.
Right, understanding.
In the past, and what we're trying to determine here is the level of, uh, alcohol beverage sales and consumption at this particular location.
I think our understanding was because it is enclosed, and they are, uh, saying that they're gonna have security in these exit and entrance areas that most likely will be monitored. So, I think the Sheriff's Department didn't really have an issue with the outdoor alcohol sales or, and.
I don't know if most likely is the best terminology to use, the specific conditions require security at every entrance and exit.
Correct, correct.
So, as I see that on this particular site plan, that's three at a minimum all the time, is that your understanding?
No, no, it's, it's, no, it's, I, I said that it would be additional security, and they put in, the actual staff put in place, if there was fifty people or more, you'd have to add another one. But I, I think it would be wise to have the three security guards that are at each exit along with the person to check the IDs and, uh, security in the parking lot.
I would refer you to the conditions of approval that you indicated that you have no, uh, problems with. The applicant is conditioned to provide one security guard for each entrance exit. There's three here, entrance exits, that means three all the time you're in operation. Are you prepared to do that?
Exactly.
Okay. Great. Go ahead.
And in addition with the parking monitoring, does that mean that you'd have to hire an additional person to walk through the parking lot? Or are they going to just see what they can do with an eye shot of where they're posted at that door?
No, it would be, uh, a total of, um, with the three inside at all times after seven o'clock, when we, when we actually, if there's any entertainment on that particular day, that's when three would always be in place for each exit and then one in the parking lot. And being that there is, I think there's a total of three entrances to the actual parking lot, depending on the other businesses will be closed at tho- at those times that we're actually operating. We was thinking that if we would need to where we would just have it to where there's one, one way in the actual property and one way out, so we can monitor it a little bit better versus having two or three guys, security in the actual parking lot. But we are at all times to have one that actually monitors the parking lot and would let us know if there's any issues with, you know, someone coming in or not abiding by the actual rules.
So, in effect, you would at all times have four guards?
Exactly, including the outside. And we was thinking of adding more if it needs to be, because at the same time, if, if there is an incident with a patron in there, and you have, you only have a person at each exit, a person have, would have to leave that designated area to go and respond, which at all times, we would need to have those places still secured. So, there would be more, but I didn't write it down as far as we would have ten, cause it's, it's not that, you know, type of, um, venue that we were looking this, to actually provide to where you need, you know, twenty guys to monitor this, this size of a space. But there would possibly be more than four at all times when there is more than fifty people in there.
Chairman Bowes?
Go ahead.
Um, this question is more so for our legal counsel. Looking at this entire conditional use permit, are we within the confines of, from a regulatory perspective, the state of California?
There's nothing in state law concerning outdoor smoking, that is regulated on a local level. The, the current state law, uh, in the labor code actually prohibits, um, allowing smoking in enclosed spaces. And there is a Attorney General opinion that says simply opening doors and windows of the interior of a structure doesn't constitute an unenclosed area. This, however, is actually outdoors, so it, it, it is acceptable under state law.
Thank you.
Chairman Bowes?
Go ahead.
Maybe this is another question, but if you add a drapery and you had a patio on top of it, would it then be considered a indoor enclosure?
I think that's an interesting question, and I would have to say it depends on the material, the fabric being used, and the extent to which it fully encloses that existing outdoor patio. But it very well could turn it into an enclosed space for sure.
So, I'm kind of thinking, you know, unless it's completely enclosed, then there still will be access to the outside. That's, if that makes sense?
The gate itself providing access to the parking lot in and, uh, standing alone would not constitute an exemption from an enclosed space. It's the fact that there, that it's actually open, that there is separation between the roof and the fence line, et cetera. I'm gonna have to look at the totality of the circumstances and whatever coverings he's contemplating. You, you definitely wanna pay careful attention to that.
Could I say one thing? I, I think maybe I may have put, worded it a little differently, but there's, there's a total of eight, kind of, I don't, you would guess, you would call them like, kind of like mansion pillars that are kind of sit actually directly inside of the patio. That was the only space there, there was gonna be, I was looking at trying to put some kind of, you know, weather retardant, you know, curtains, you know, just draping in that area, which is those eight pillars that you actually see. And those are directly inside of the actual patio itself, which it still has, I think, at least a, a two or three feet distance from the actual front of the gating of, of the wrought iron fencing in the front. So, it wouldn't be something that is gonna enclose from the actual fencing itself. It, it was just more or less a cosmetic, um, thing that we were looking at. But I, I've never brought it up until now, but I just thought it was something to initially say if that's even possible.
The definition of that would be a pergolo. Question. Our attorney, Ms. Corbett, um, in our agenda review, which we had last Monday, we were discussing, um, smoking within an entrance, within twenty-five feet of an entrance. Is this one going to be in violation of that, or is it going to be not? Is, can you go over how that works?
Um, again, my review of state law, um, state law is silent on the twenty-five-foot, um, separation requirement. That is a local issue. A lot of cities in the last several years have adopted twenty-five or fifty-foot restrictions in both outdoor dining and in outdoor bar lounge-type, um, locations, but that's not a state requirement at this point.
My next question is for our applicant. Were you gonna have security cameras?
Yes, a total of ten cameras that would actually be DVR set up to where it's recording twenty-four hours surveillance.
That's good. And then on the twenty-one and older requirement, how are you going to enforce that?
It's strictly twenty-one, um, no one, patrons under twenty-one is admitted at all with a type forty-eight due to it not being a restaurant. It's kind of, uh, I guess, um, looked at as, uh, like he, the Chairman Bowes said, a nightclub, a bar.
Well, I'm, I'm concerned that you're gonna have, attract younger crowds on certain nights, how, how you going to enforce that?
No, it's strictly twenty-one and over at all times, and IDs would be checked when the person enters the, uh, entrance at all times.
Would you stamp them, give them a wrist bracelet?
It would be more like, yes, it would be a stamp, uh, there wouldn't be need for a wristband, um, because there's not gonna be a differential from someone under twenty-one or someone over twenty-one. And that's, that's what that, um, wristband thing more or less implies to where a person, you know, shows a wristband for that. Unless it was a special event where you had a certain designated area within the facility, that where a person was a VIP or so forth, then you could use wristbands or so forth.
You're going to have waitstaff serving, you're not gonna have walk-up to the bar type of stuff?
What do you mean by a walk-up to the bar?
Well, according to the, you have like a horseshoe-shaped bar there, and I see that there's a waiter station, so I assume you're gonna have a waitstaff serving.
Yes, yes, there would be, uh, cocktail waitresses, and there will be for, uh, where you'd actually walk to the actual bar itself, and you could purchase your alcohol. But no one would, a person would get carded at, when they, when they walk into the establishment, and deemed necessary, they would get carded again for credit card purposes or for, if they looked like they, you know, they're under twenty-one or something like that, at the actual bar itself. But we wouldn't admit anyone under twenty-one due to the licensing that we have.
Would any waitstaff work on the patio?
Yes, yes, and no one hired, um, under twenty-one.
More questions? I'm sorry, go ahead.
On the marketing aspect, um, who are you targeting? What demographic and what type of music, um, do you see this entertainment, the venue supporting?
Well, all, all, all types of music, we're, we're looking at something to where we could attract anyone from twenty-one and above. Usually when you target one demographic, you get one demographic, and that's kind of what you're left with. But there is, the reason why we was so, um, wanted to not be labeled as a nightclub, because that puts you in a box right off, 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 off the bat to where that's what you view, that's what you see. But when you, when you're, when you open the doors to everyone across the board, to where you have designated music for everybody, then you kind of, you know, you have it to where everyone's welcome, and it's not set to where, you know, a certain demographic would come. But it would be, the marketing would be in terms of newspaper, radio, Facebook, all kind, types of social media. But it wouldn't be one type of music, it would be music for everybody, which, you know, I, I wouldn't wanna have it to where it was only one type of music, and then, then you're only stuck with possibly getting one type of person that, you know, everyone else will be alienated through that course of music.
Hi, Mr. Carr. Without putting you on, really on the spot, but that's what happens when we have public hearings on conditional use permits. My sense is you've been down this road before.
Yes, I've, I've had several businesses in the past, and I've experienced. Yes, I've had several businesses in the past, and I've experienced over twenty years, and I've never had any like license through, you know, alcohol license violated or any conditions set forth other than the usual conditions that everyone gets when they purchase a license. I take it very, I don't take it lightly. It's a serious, you know, place to actually run and, you know, as far as it was mentioned by Commissioner Traciano was we were going to use outside promoters. We pretty much would do everything in-house. So, it's, we take it, you know, really serious as the opportunity. You know, it is a privilege across the board.
We think so too, and thank you. One of the additional conditions in the conditional list, number twelve, is a strict, quote, "No in-and-out policy shall be enforced," which would restrict guests from entering and exiting the premise.
Yes, I think that should be in place due to a person that might just be coming to the establishment to not, you know, consume alcohol, would just want to go back and forth. So, we would put in place that policy to where they would have to pay a fee, a hefty fee to actually, if they want to go outside. You're going to get the normal, I forgot my credit card, I have, you know, an accident, my heel broke. It could be all types of things, but when you put that across the board, you kind of, when the people come in, you did your job once. You don't have to keep doing it two and three times over with checking their ID, making sure that they haven't brought anything in from their car into the establishment. And then it's, at that point, it's kind of a, you know, a lose-lose situation because they're not here to, you know, have fun and, you know, look out for the actual business a whole. It would be more or less, they go to their car to consume their alcohol, which the no ins and outs definitely prevents that.
We've certainly had experience in this community with that happening, and we've ended up having revocation hearings and revoking conditional use permits for similar reasons as you've just described.
Yes, sir.
All right, any further questions or comments from anyone? Anymore? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Cor. Appreciate your comments tonight. Do we have any other speakers on this applicant?
No other cards on this item, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. All right then, it'd be appropriate to close the public hearing and consider comments, questions, or a motion.
Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Chris.
I was talking to Deputy Jordan before this in regards to if he was aware that there was a ladies' first right next door. And he said he didn't know that that was the business that was located right there. And I discussed what the, you know, possible, you know, situation might be in regards to that, what the relationship might be. And he said he would be open to us coming back to this and revisiting it after he's able to go back and see what the potential relationship might be. So, with that, I'd actually like to table the motion.
Well, there's no motion yet, but what you're suggesting is we should continue this matter?
Yes.
And that would be, you're offering that as a motion?
Correct.
All right. So, it's been moved to continue this matter for, what, until the next meeting?
Until Deputy Jordan's able to come back with an additional report.
Well, that's kind of loose since we don't control Deputy Jordan. How about a date certain?
Let's do, when's two meetings out?
Pardon?
When's two meetings out?
Two meetings? All right. That's your motion. So, that would continue the matter until July?
Correct.
Do we have a second?
Is it appropriate to ask a quick question before we do that? What does that do to the applicant? What does that put him from a financial perspective? Is that something that we're causing him, any stress or?
If there's any deadlines or anything like that?
Well, two months out. Just a question. That needs to be, I think, considered.
I don't know. The proper procedure is we have a motion that's a primary motion to continue a matter. There's actually no discussion under a primary motion, so it would either have a second or it will die for the lack thereof. So, do we have a second? I'm afraid your motion fails.
All right.
So, I didn't hear any correction from Assistant City Attorney. All right then. So, any other questions or comments or motions?
I've got a question. I thought ladies' first was to the south in a separate building away from this particular...
That's correct. It's right on the corner. I think they'd be right next to each other.
But they're in separate buildings?
Correct.
And the entrance to ladies' first is not on a corner, but it's down towards the center of the building?
I believe so.
Thank you.
Some distance away. This is a Wednesday, Tuesday through Saturday, or Wednesday through Saturday operation. Seven PM is the earliest opening time, if I recall. Is that right? I had occasion to visit the site Saturday evening. It's a ghost town over there, unless you're in the bail bonds business or the nail, whatever they, nail salon business. Everything, what few tenants that are there were not open, other than the bail bonds and the, however, there's a substantial vacancy factor there. So, I'm not sure how potential tenants or obviously existing tenants have been notified, and no one has written to us or showed up here tonight to talk to us about it. So, one could assume there's no objections at this point. At least, I would make that assumption. So, I'm not sure what the hours of operation with the fitness center are in the nighttime. I don't know. But they're, what, four, five hundred feet away. Their main doorway is from this operation, and this operation is kind of in the armpit of the... No offense, but in the armpit of the design center. So, we don't choose locations. Anyway, that's all I've got to say. So, back to more comments or a motion.
Chairman Vos?
Go ahead.
I will make the motion that we allow a cocktail lounge with live entertainment with on-sale beer, wine, and distilled spirits, type forty-eight alcohol beverage control license in the commercial plan new development, CPD, CPD zone. And then, adopt resolution fourteen oh three approving conditional use permit fourteen dash zero four.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
I mean to get out wordy on that.
Very good, thank you. Any further questions, comments, discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes six to one.
All right. Commissioner Chris voting no. All right, thank you. Good luck with your business, sir. All right, the next item is tentative parcel map number seven two five three two. This is the subdivision, a subdivision of ten commercial parcels in a CPD zone at the southeast corner of Sixtieth Street, Weston Avenue L. Welcome back, Mr. Lane. Without objection, the public hearing is open. And for the record, we've received an uncontested letter, and we've also received a letter from the Quartz Hill Water District indicating there's no guarantee of water service, which is not an unusual piece of correspondence in these challenging times for water service. But at any rate, I'm assuming the applicant's seen this, seen the letter. If not, we'd be happy to share it with you. May I have a staff report, please?
Chairman Vos and members of the Planning Commission, this particular proposed tentative parcel map is located on the site of the proposed project that was approved back in July of two thousand and nine, which is an approximately forty-acre commercial project. That overall project is currently valid and in force on the site. Its entitlement is in place, and its environmental clearance is in place. This particular request that is in front of you is to allow for the subdivision of the property if and when that particular commercial development project actually moves forward. The parcels as laid out on the tentative map are essentially consistent with the layout of the approved commercial development, particularly with respect to access locations from the adjoining streets. Staff has included within its recommended conditions of approval a requirement that the improvement requirements that were placed on the original conditional use permit approval would also be in force in effect in regards to this tentative map, if and when it should be recorded. The reason that we are looking and recommending, looking at doing that and recommending it to you is we have a suspicion that if this site develops, it will develop in some kind of phased manner. And we want to ensure, number one, that the conditions are consistent between the conditional use permit and the tentative parcel map. But more to the point, the conditions that exist in the conditional use permit allow the installation of improvements that are within, or allow the installation of improvements under the direction of the city's director of public works and city engineer. And because of the potential phase nature, we want to ensure that there's flexibility on the part of the city as far as what types of improvements it would require and when those would be required, depending, of course, on how any phasing of the site occurred. The other factor that I would point out to you here, approval of this tentative map would essentially also change the expiration date of the existing conditional use permit. Based upon the language that exists in the city's municipal code, a tentative map and another approval, such as a conditional use permit, that are on the same site for the same project essentially acquire coterminous expiration dates. So, it's important to note that approval of the tentative map would take the existing expiration date on the conditional use permit from September of two thousand and fourteen to, I believe, May of two thousand and sixteen. So, I just want to call that to your attention and make sure the commission is clear on that. The applicant is present. Staff would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
On your last point, routinely, we hear extensions of maps up to three years, or one year at a time, up to three years beyond the two-year initial approval. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
So, what this means is we won't be visiting this next year if it passes?
To September?
Yes.
Well, I don't want to make that kind of pronouncement because there's always the potential for a revision or some other request that may require your review. So, I would say that if there are no changes to what is approved, assuming that the commission were to grant the approval of the tentative parcel map, no, you would not see it again at that point.
And then, in two thousand and sixteen, five of two thousand and sixteen, would that mean that the three-year review process, one year at a time afterwards, if development hasn't started, or is that the end of it?
The applicant, well, under the scenario that if the map and the conditional use permit were due to expire in May of two thousand and sixteen, the applicant would have the right, under the provisions of the city's municipal code, to request a one-year extension at that time. In fact, they could, in theory, request three one-year extensions consecutively. It is up to the city at that point as to whether to grant said extension. The other thing, though, as you're probably undoubtedly aware, the state has kind of gotten in the habit of granting blanket extensions to all valid maps within the state. If that were to happen prior to the two thousand and sixteen date, this particular map and conditional use permit would get the benefit of that extension. And that has actually occurred with several other projects in the city at this point, in which case there would be no need for the applicant to come before you in two thousand and sixteen. They would need to come before you when that next expiration date hit.
Thank you.
That's because the state's laws take precedence over the city's ordinance?
Yes, I, yes, it does.
However, additional conditions can always be added or removed depending on the action before the commission at whatever time that comes before us, right?
Correct. The city typically has reserved the right to add additional conditions or modify existing ones as part of any extension request.
So, the notes on the map before us that have, that are, need correction? For example, the water purveyor? That would, those would be corrected based on, on what? A further review, assuming we approve it, or what?
The applicant may wish to speak to that issue. I recall that when we went through the conditional use permit, there is some question as to exactly who the water purveyor is for the site. I believe it's, we have, we have, we have Water Works District Forty indicating that they would serve the site. We have the Quartz Hill Water District indicating they would serve the site. So, perhaps the applicant would care to provide some clarification on that.
And as I recall, there's a large AVEC turnout on the site that's currently used to irrigate the ranch.
My name is George Lane. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, staff, right there. Regarding the water districts, it's very unusual, but we're in both water districts, LA County Water District and Quartz Hill, you know, Water District. And right now, we receive water, domestic, you know, water from the Quartz Hill Water Company, but it's through an LA County Water District line, and so it's a little bit confusing. And approximately twenty years ago, we put in a meter to serve that entire parcel, and we have two meters, one, I believe, is eight-inch and one is ten-inch. So, the water is already, you know, served, and we had a commitment with Quartz Hill County Water District, Quartz Hill, you know, Water District, a number of years ago. Our ranch, we traded the Quartz Hill two wells for service to, for potential service to our property. And so, our property is already, you know, served, and we have the agreement. And maybe Quartz Hill Water District, maybe they weren't aware of that when they wrote that letter. But I see the property does have water, and it's already been paid for, and it's physically on the property.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
You're way ahead of the game, Mr. Lane. And thank you, by the way, for piling this map and tying it to the conditional use permit.
Thank you.
As we had suggested. Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Any further speakers?
I have no other speakers on this item, Mr. Chairman.
I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
Brian, this would, by approving this resolution, make it easier for staff to keep track of these maps and CUPs?
Oh, yes, rather than having separate expiration dates, definitely.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, anything further? All right, then it would be appropriate to close the public hearing and consider discussion or a motion on this matter.
I move that we adopt resolution number 14-04, approving tentative parcel map number 72532.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you. Further questions, comments, discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes seven-zero.
Good, thank you. All right. The next public hearing is tentative tract map 72565. This is a subdivision of thirty-six single-family lots in an R-7,000 zone. So without objection, the public hearing is open. May we have a staff report, please? Before I say that, I'm sorry, we do have one piece of correspondence from Michael and Wilda McCombre. Am I saying that correctly? All right. Go ahead with the staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, the item that's before you is approximately ten-acre sized, single-family tract. It is proposed for thirty-six single-family lots in the R-7,000 zone. It is located at the southwest corner of 65th Street West and Avenue J8. As you can see, the map would essentially take most of its access from an interior street that is accessed from 65th Street West. However, to the south, there are, I believe it's four lots that would have access to a street on the south side. The design of the tract is done largely to make sure that there's still adequate access for potential future subdivision to the west of this, as that property is also designated for a single-family residential and in R-7,000 configuration. Couple of things to point out to you on this. This is one of the first tracts that's come before the commission since the city has revised its design guidelines and its requirements. And you see that reflected in the tentative map. I would highlight for you the meandering sidewalk design, the parkway approach that's used, the requirement for the bulb outs within the tract and actually also out on 65th Street West. That's designed to shorten crossing distance for pedestrians to make it easier for handicapped access to occur also, rather than the single ramp that comes kind of at an angle down into the intersection. Also included in there is a requirement that the applicant has to design and place roundabout design at the intersection of 65th Street West and Avenue J8. We certainly see this as important from a safety standpoint and particularly slowing the speed of traffic, given the design of 65th Street West and its access all the way to Avenue J. I think that this is kind of the start of many of these sorts of approaches that you're going to see as staff works to ensure that the design guidelines the council adopted several years ago are incorporated into projects. Not that it affects this, but if you look at the development that's close to done for the Marriott Town Place Suites, you see that same meandering sidewalk design that is included on that site. So that's a design feature that's also carried over here. Naturally, all of these lots, once developed, would be subject to the city's solar requirements and other things that were adopted as a part of the most recent residential zone update that, as the commission will recall, was reviewed pretty extensively. I'd be happy, we do, we are recommending to you approval of the request. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions? None? All right. Do we have an applicant or speaker?
Alex Baharlo.
Good evening, Mr. Baharlo.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Vos. Thank you for having us. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Alex Baharlo, I'm with Delta Ranch LLC. We are the owner and hopefully will be the developer of the project. We've done business in the city of Lancaster for many years. This project is one of the first we've done since the down market and hopefully, as Mr. Ludick said, many more of these will be coming to Lancaster. We're kind of ahead of the curve. We're foreseeing that maybe the market will come back in the next year, year and a half while we process this map and do the final engineering and such. We have followed all the new rules and regulations and design guidelines. There was, you know, pushback on our part. We welcome all the new changes and we think it's going to make for a better project. Again, hopefully the market will support all the extra expenses, but that's beyond our control. I want to thank you for your time. And if you have any questions, I'm here with Mr. Nazarian, who's our engineer from Holland Foreman. We'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. There may be some questions. Anyone?
The letter that was delivered to us was very concerned about dust. They are east of your project and their question had to do with what kind of dust control. I know that's in the conditions that you're going to be doing that. The city has taken us on a field trip where we had different things to help keep that down. In a big operation like you're going to be moving quite a bit of dirt there, how are you going to, you just going to water it down or is there any kind of special thing that you have planned for that? Because that was our one letter of concern here that we had.
Correct. Yeah, Mr. Hall, like I said, we've done, we've been building homes for many years. We do follow, obviously, all the requirements for watering with water trucks. Frankly, it's not a very expensive cost item for us. And in the past, what we've done, especially with homes around and people have pools, what ends up happening is you have more trouble if you don't use the water trucks. So if need be, especially when it's a windy day, we just get more trucks out to make sure we water adequately and there's no, there's minimal dust when we're grading. So that's all I can say, but we're going to follow certainly all the regulations. And again, on windy days, we'll do our best to have extra trucks out there.
Thank you.
You're... Assuming you're aware of the current condition in Water Works District 40, limiting the availability of, first of all, water service and maybe more importantly, the fact that construction meters are not being allowed for new development currently in Water Works 40. You're aware of that?
Absolutely. And that will have to be hopefully resolved between now and when we get to a final map. I think that's the case with obviously any new development in the city of Lancaster and the annual valley. And as you know, there's a lot of moving parts. Some have decided and chosen to wait for that to get resolved. And we're anticipating it's going to get resolved in the next year and a half. If not, unfortunately, like many other developers, we will not be able to file for a final map. We understand that. We understand that.
Yeah, the conditions that are, that you've agreed to, particularly for water service, very clear that you're obliged to secure water service to file your map. And that's not an unusual condition in the development arena for any project, right?
Correct.
All right. Any other questions or comments from anyone? All right, thank you, Mr. Baharlo.
Thank you.
Do we have another speaker?
Rachel Cobb.
Good evening, Ms. Cobb. You know, this isn't, this isn't a scary operation. You can just relax.
Okay. Well, the reason why I'm here is we just recently moved to this neighborhood and we're very happy in it. And we actually walk our dogs here and everybody in this neighborhood enjoys this area. I know that's none of their business, but I mean, you know, that doesn't bother them. But our main concern, my husband and I and some neighbors, is the dust, like our neighbor, Ms. Will and Mr. Mike said. And another thing is 65th Street is a, it does, it has, it doesn't have an exit to another street. So it ends right there where they're going to be developing this whole thing. And the only access is go all the way to J, go to J8, which is a street two-way that goes into different neighborhoods and a school, or into our neighborhood, which is a very small neighborhood with a lot of children and not wide streets. So we have construction trucks, water trucks, and all these things coming about. And at the end of the street, there's also a, an area where there is a flood control. So it seems like they won't be able to continue 65th to be able to help the, you know, flow of cars. And another concern that we have is on 65th and where J, no, on J and 65th in that corner, there is a lot that has been fenced and there's lights and there's graffiti and there is tires and junk. And it's been there for more than four years. I hear the builders hoping and hoping and hoping that the market will go up and all these things where, what if we have another area where there's, you know, a wall and lights, but they can't finish the construction? Why don't we focus on finishing that part right there and then maybe go on to this next part right here? And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Staff care to comment?
Yes, I'll speak to the second or the final comment first. The project, which I believe Ms. Cobb is referring to, is the development up on the north side of J near 65th. And, you know, without belaboring it any further, the city has taken action, including some agreements that we've entered to try and make sure that that situation gets resolved. The good news is that we are, I believe, there's a map and other work that's being processed now that will help ensure that at least the mechanisms are getting in place to resolve that. So I do understand her concern and that's certainly been a city concern also because of the flooding and other issues. The key there is trying to get the connection ultimately done eastward under 60th and into what we lovingly call the moat that's around the prison, because that's the flow that the water needs to take. On the issue of the extension of 65th Street West, it will ultimately go all the way to Avenue K, but not with this project. There is a flood control system within 65th Street West. That fenced area that exists to the south of the end of 65th channels the water into those, into that storm drain and takes it northward. When development does occur southward from this point, that project would be required to ultimately connect 65th. This particular project with thirty-six lots, about three hundred and sixty vehicle trips a day, would likely use either J8 or 65th all the way up to Avenue J. The likelihood of any significant amount of traffic working its way through the neighborhood, I think, is relatively slim. The direction to there is pretty indirect. So I'm not sure that that's a reasonable concern as far as that's, as far as that issue. On the dust, I appreciate the commission bringing up the issue that we've had a number of different ways that we've looked at controlling that. But I think the important thing from our standpoint is that the city is getting a lot more vigilant on trying to make sure that all of that is dealt with and taken care of. One of the things, so that the neighbors are aware, we do require the posting of a sign on any development site that indicates who's in charge of that and who to contact if there's a dust issue. So not only does the city look for enforcement, but there's a mechanism provided for citizens to address directly to the developer or their representative that there's a problem and they need to address it. And I can tell you, that's been extremely effective. I was just told actually earlier today that one of our solar developers was called by a neighbor. Well, he was doing something over a couple of weekends ago and informed him that they saw dust coming off his property. So I'm glad that that system's in place and he was able to address it.
Yeah, we are too, since we discussed that some years ago and recommended that that condition be placed on all developments. However, the reality of this particular site, in that location, I actually live south and west of that. And as I was driving in this evening, noticing the few hundred sheep that are out there grazing between K and L and 65th and 70th and the thirty-five mile an hour wind that's blowing, you know, creating or lifting the dust off of those fields as well as between K and J with no activity. So it's a reality of living on the high desert. There will be dust, there is dust, whether there's development or not. So at any rate, you know, I share the concerns that of every homeowner who currently resides in a home adjacent to a potential impact for future development. But I would remind us all, without developers, you wouldn't have a home. Without somebody taking a financial risk and bringing a project forward and building it, you wouldn't have a home to live in, nor would I. So I'll stop there.
Chairman Vos, there's also some exciting aspects to the design of this tract that Ms. Cobb may not be aware of. And that is the road dieting. And I was wondering if maybe you could explain the benefits to that neighborhood that's going to have from the roundabout and those road diets and how that's going to help with her concern about the kids being in danger.
Yeah, I'm going to defer that to Michelle Cantrell, the city engineer, who is far better at explaining this than I am.
Yes, the design of particularly 65th Street West, we've, let's see, if this project were to have been brought forward a few years ago, we would probably be widening 65th West and adding enough pavement for four lanes of traffic, roughly an eighty-foot crossing for anybody who might want to cross 65th Street West. And, you know, creating this extra pavement then that then the city would have to maintain, making it a faster street, you know, when you have a much wider street and no side friction, you know, there's much of a greater potential for people to speed up and down the street. So when we looked at this project, we saw a great opportunity to try and change the way that we are moving forward and developing this area, since I believe the entire west side of 65th, at least from Avenue J to Avenue K, is currently vacant. So we have an opportunity to reduce the size of the street for that entire mile. And we knew that this particular tract is in close proximity to a school and we wanted to make sure that this development, that anybody who moved into this development would have easy access to the school. Particularly, we would want to promote walking to and from school so that these folks who live just a quarter of a mile or so from the school wouldn't get in their car and feel like they had to drive their kids to school because they felt it was unsafe to cross 65th Street West. So the bulb out- So the bulbouts that we're installing at each of the intersections will really help reduce that crossing length and the amount of time that the kids are exposed to traffic, as well as the roundabout design at Avenue J eight and 65th Street West. We think it will really calm people and discourage that speeding. And so we really want to make it a more livable neighborhood, more walkable community. And we think the improvements that we're suggesting will do that, help us do that.
So this is all part of the design guidelines, the walking studies that we've done over the last few years? And the idea of road diets and roundabouts is to create a more livable place that we can walk our dogs across the street, meander down the sidewalks, things like that? So is this the first of a development that's like this?
Yes, it is actually, at least the most recent. I can't remember the last time we've actually approved a tentative tract map. So this is kind of the first of its kind here for the, since we've approved some of our master plans, the master plan of trails and bikeways, we've also integrated some of the concepts on the safe routes to school plans that we're currently working on. That's not an approved plan at this point, but we've taken a lot of the concepts and, and things that we've worked on in developing those plans and, and integrated it into this project.
Well, it certainly looks exciting for what's going to happen and it'd be nice to see the changes and stuff happen with the design guidelines, kind of a fruition of work that suddenly comes together.
Yes, I agree. It's an exciting project.
Thank you. Anything further from anyone? No? All right, we have any other speakers, Mr. Ludiki?
I have no other cards, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Then it would be appropriate to close the public hearing without an objection and consider a motion or deliberation or discussion? A motion, please.
I move that we adopt resolution number 14-05, approving tentative tract map number 72565.
Thank you.
Second motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Well, good luck. We hope the market will improve. That's for sure. We need new housing. Good luck. Under new business, we have the transit-oriented district TOD zone. And their request is an, an adoption, however. You can go ahead and tell us all about it, Mr. Ludiki, or whomever is going to.
Yes, the, the, the plan itself, as I recall, you got a, a summary presentation on. But let me kind of go over briefly where we're at in the process. The city's architectural and design planning commission took, took a couple of months looking at this and, and providing input and comments on it and ultimately recommended to you approval of the, of the TOD zones document. Now, their review on it is primarily from a design standpoint, you know, appearance and so forth. But as the planning commission, you also have legal obligations that you have to meet. And this particular project does require ultimately a general plan amendment and a zone change recommendation. So you have to consider those aspects as a commission, as well as the content of the, of the regulatory document itself. Staff is currently going through a required noticing period that all can, all general plan amendments need to go through. And we are anticipating that that will take another, what, Chris, 90 days total? We've already begun that. But we're also aware from, from the commission's standpoint that you have generally been pretty thorough in your review of the document and providing comments, asking questions and asking for any modifications that, that you may find appropriate. Ultimately, as the planning commission, you are an advisory body on this. You will make a recommendation to the city council. And it does not appear unfortunately that we have anyone here to provide testimony this evening, although typically you would take testimony from the public as part of your deliberation and they can certainly provide that to you orally or in some written form. If you have any particular questions at this point specifically about the document itself, Chris Aunty is the project manager and has pretty extensive knowledge of all of the details. And as I indicated to you at your previous study session, if the commission feels as part of this deliberation that you would like a more focused study session of some kind on the document, David Sargent of Sargent Town Planning, who is the consultant that had prepared the document, would be more than happy to be a part of that and provide you the opportunity with perhaps a little more dialogue, conversation, give and take, if, if you think that would be worth your while.
Thank you, Mr. Ludiki. So the, the noticing requirements then would include, I'm assuming, a minimum of one public hearing and given our history of general plan revisions and zone changes, we've typically had more than one, depending on the public input and our, and also our own deliberation, right?
Correct.
So at a minimum then, when would you anticipate the first public hearing noticing, or the first date of a public hearing on a regular meeting day?
We, we would do it for your June meeting and then we would anticipate that you would probably take any testimony, provide any comment, continue that public hearing over to July, perhaps August. And it's really at that point, once we pass our, our noticing requirement, it's up to you as a commission as to when you're comfortable in making the recommendations.
Is there sequent noticing as well concurrently?
Yes, but in, in this particular case, our, our analysis indicates that because this area either is added density or in the case of the area east of the railroad tracks has been designated as mixed use through the general plan, that the, that the EIR prepared on a programmatic level for the, for the general plan adoption would be adequate for this implementing code. Obviously, if there were to be projects subsequently developed under this implementing code, they would be subject to whatever environmental requirements and review are necessary at that time.
Is it possible that we could have Mr. Sargent at the June meeting? Would that be appropriate or should it be at an agenda review?
We could have him here. I guess the question that, that we would want to kind of explore is in what format do you really want to have, have his expertise available? I mean, we can have a public meeting that exists within, say, the Parks Conference Room or, or something like that. And as we've done, say, for the Kaiser project, when we looked at that and so forth. And that provides a little bit better setting for dialogue or question and answer. But we could also have it here if you prefer that it be available to be televised out to the public. So I, I think either way works. It's really how you see it as a commission.
I believe televising it would probably be my preference. It is my preference to be televised. Also, when do we get the document? We have to look it up online?
Yes, it is online, but I can, I can route you guys a link to it as well.
Okay. I do like hard copies because I do have a tendency to mark through them.
We can provide hard copies.
Okay, thank you.
So does anybody disagree that we should at le, at least have one session with Mr. Sargent here on a regular meeting day? That be all right with everyone? I don't know what our June agenda anticipate, our June agenda looks like.
We can take a look at it and then we'll, we'll contact Mr. Sargent tomorrow and see what his availability is. If he's not available for June, July, I would say is appropriate. But he did indicate his willingness to come and as you probably remember, he's quite willing to talk at length about these kinds of items.
Well, we had him March 17th and, and very informative certainly, but not, I mean, we didn't get into any cross discussion in detail really. It was more of a presentation on his part. You were going to say something?
Yes, I, I, just my opinion is I do agree that we need to have him back, but I, my preference is to get in the planning conference room and just roll up our sleeves and hear what he has to say and just dig in. That's just my preference as opposed to a regular televised meeting. Because I know the public is invited to it as well, so.
Has to, has to be a notice.
There, there are a couple of possibilities for that. You could do it as a part of your normal special meeting that you have, which we tend to refer to as agenda review. The other possibility, although this does not allow for the televising of the, of the discussion, you could open your regular meeting here in June or July, conduct the business that you need to conduct and then for that particular item adjourn to, say, our Parks Conference Room, as long as the public is aware that, where that is and they would also have the ability to attend.
Logistically though, it's a challenge for the public because of access coming and going. City Hall is closed after 6:00 PM, so you can get out, but you can't get in. Or you can get out certain doors, but you can't get in any of them, right? So somewhat challenging.
Yes.
I know you had mentioned that at our special meeting that there was a certain amount of resource still available in the grant funds for Mr. Sargent to attend. However, one meeting, two meetings, do we know? Best guess?
Mr. Sargent did indicate that he definitely can be at the June meeting and possibly an additional meeting if needed.
So maybe, so maybe we have him in June. We have sufficient time in advance of that meeting to review the document, get our, at least get our questions together, listen to what he's got to say, have some dialogue, also have, it's a public hearing, right? And then decide at the end of that whether we want to continue it to a date certain in a, in a workshop situation or something to that effect, right? Could we do that?
Yes, you could do that also.
Would that be all right with everyone? That work? Nobody's going to Hawaii on a June meeting? Maybe I will. It's a good idea. Definitely you want to go to?
Yeah, Denver.
Denver, yeah. All right, so, so there's, doesn't appear to be any objection to scheduling it for the June meeting. Public hearing and having Mr. Sargent here and noticing the public as best we can to generate some input if, if folks want to give it, as well as the businesses and people that live in that area, particularly because this would, that area being a large portion of the downtown portion of the city, right?
Correct. And there, there were a number of stakeholders that are either business owners or residents in that area that were a part of the, the formulation of the, of the plan and part of the community meetings. So we'll see whether they have, although sometimes it's kind of funny, if people are satisfied with something, they, they don't show up, so.
Well, there's been considerable amount of, of work done by the ADC as well as the community meetings dating back three years or more, right?
Well, actually, if you count the southeast transit village planning process, which kind of preceded this in a, in a portion of that area, yeah, it's getting pretty close to that. At least two, it's two years at least.
And more, yeah. All right. So then, I think you have direction? Anybody else have any comments? Before we move to director's announcements, Mr. Ludiki?
I really have no announcements.
Well, we have a congratulations. I understand you have a son graduating from high school soon.
Yes, I do. That's, I, I guess as long as we're on that subject, yes, I have a, a son that will graduate this Thursday. And both he and his older brother have been accepted to different universities for the fall, so they will be attending and I will be writing checks.
And you'll be around as our director for a little while longer than, it sounds like. That's good news for us anyway. I don't know about you, but it's good news for us. We will, or we did get a briefing, if you will, at our agenda review about a couple of the issues we've asked the city attorney, Assistant City Attorney to look into. And I would anticipate, what would you anticipate coming back to us in June with those issues?
Certainly with respect to the issue of carnivals and circuses and the like, I will have a more formal staff report prepared in advance of the June meeting, definitely.
Very good. All right, thank you. Anything additional from the commission members? All right then. Since we have no public here now, we don't need to announce that there's an opportunity to speak to us unless somebody's hiding out in the hallway. Doesn't appear to be. So then we stand adjourned to a special meeting for agenda review Monday, June 9th at 5:30 PM in the now re-designated Public Safety Conference Room here at City Hall. Thank you.